Begin the work session of June 11th, the roll call please.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mom? Commissioner Polly? Mayor Neely?
Here. With that, the future agenda items, I presume we're kind of on schedule, the ones we've set before in terms of what we want to talk about, are we Nancy?
We're scheduled for, well, we have several on the schedule.
Everything we brought up is on the schedule.
Is on the schedule, that's correct.
Very good. So does anybody want to disturb things by adding another agenda item? We do that at commission meetings, really, more than anything else.
I didn't do a last commission meeting because I thought I'd do it here.
Go ahead.
Okay. Restrooms downtown, we talked a little bit about it.
Anything else? With that, we'll go into our discussion items, Oregon Municipal Storm Water Permit, John Lewis.
Thank you commissioners for taking the time out of your busy schedule to, let me plug that in, sorry, to listen to this topic. We've heard this topic, we're updating, giving you an update tonight, and Krista Reiningapp from Brown and Caldwell has presented for you before. We've tried to trim down this presentation so that we could get through it relatively efficiently, so there's some duplication here, but we just really want to keep you informed about our stormwater management program. And again, some upcoming needs that continue to knock on our back door, DQ, our friends over at DQ continue to add requirements and things that we need, hoops that we need to jump through, and so we've been able to do that, but I thought it'd be good to have Krista to give us an update, so that's what she's here to do. So Krista.
So, is everyone seeing this, I'm assuming?
You don't have a screen yet. You don't have a screen, we don't.
Will in one moment.
Well, basically, I was going to talk about, I will just do a quick overview of what, why we have this program, what the stormwater quality issues are, and then I'll just recap the permit requirements. I think last time I was here, we were waiting for a new permit, and there's some new directions from EPA. We have our permit now, so I'll explain what the new permit requirements are and additional resources that we need to implement the new requirements. So just background, the reason we have this program is all the impervious surfaces in urban areas, roads, roofs, driveways, anything that prevents water from going into the ground and not into the vegetation, causes additional runoff when it rains. And basically, we have a lot of pollutants that are on those surfaces that get captured by the runoff and go into our storm drain system and the catch basins in the streets and eventually work their way into our surface water bodies. And the issues are, you know, pesticides, we have a lot of copper from, copper sulfate that gets used to treat moss on roofs, bacteria, oil and grease, fertilizers have nutrients. There's a whole variety of pollutants that are, that are at issue. So the program has really focused on pollutant reduction in the past, and there's also a new focus on just the sheer volume of water. Since it doesn't go into the ground, we have a lot more water running off rapidly, and it's caused, it can cause significant erosion of our stream bank systems and even impact property and habitat and have more water quality impacts because it's, it's causing all this sediment to go into the water bodies. So locally, there's also this program under the Clean Water Act. The NPDS permit, which I'll talk about for stormwater, is under the Clean Water Act, and so is TMDL program, which is Total Maximum Daily Load Program. And locally, we have had water quality standards exceeded in the Willamette for bacteria, mercury, and temperature, which has caused requirements for Oregon City to have a plan to address those because you have tributaries that drain to the Willamette River. So that's just kind of the background on why these regulations are in place. Just a quick recap of the permit requirements. We applied for these permits in the early 90s, and all cities with greater than 100,000 in population were required to get these, Phase 1 permits they're required. And DQ had the authority to also sort of combine, you know, urban areas, which was your situation for Clackamas County, into one permit. So Oregon City and 12 other jurisdictions fall into the Clackamas County permit. So the main element of the requirement in your permit is that you have a stormwater management plan. And the stormwater management plan, so you have one now, and you've had one since the early 90s when this was first required, that has been evolving over time. And the objective of that stormwater management plan is to reduce pollutants to the maximum extent practicable. And it's required to have specific categories of activities, which I'll describe in a minute. And also sampling of the runoff is required to monitor what, what we're seeing in the runoff and to what extent. I won't go through this, but basically, our first permit was in the early 90s. We just got our third permit. They're five-year permit periods, but there's usually a big gap at the end of the period when we're negotiating a new one, which is what just happened. So even though our last permit ended in 2009, our new one started in 2012, so we're already a year into it. So generally, in your stormwater management plan, the categories of activities that you're required to have address public education and outreach, public involvement, illicit discharges, detection and elimination, so that's going out during dry weather to see if you have flows in your system and where they're coming from. Industrial and commercial inspections, municipal operations includes like street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, things like that. An erosion control program, you're required to have water quality standards for new development, and now we're required to also have a more focused maintenance program for maintaining those water quality facilities. We still have to do monitoring, annual reporting, and ongoing adaptive management. We're constantly supposed to be looking at our reprograms, improving them, refining them, since there's still so many unknowns about how effective all these activities are at reducing pollutants.
Could I go back to something you said? Innocent discharge and detection elimination, you said you were checking this out during the summer season?
Yeah, this, the purpose of this program is, I mean, your stormwater system shouldn't have flows in dry weather, should be just for stormwater runoff. So if you have flows in your system during dry weather, they want to know why. And sometimes it's innocuous, it can just be seepage from groundwater, but sometimes it's a connection from an industry that's discharging cooling water or some, or sanitary sewers cross-connected. So it's a way of going out to see if there's connections that shouldn't be there.
So I presume we take into account that some of our older systems, in fact, are tied to streams that were put underground, they're still part of our stormwater system?
Yes.
Okay.
So when we were negotiating the last permit, there was a lot of activity at EPA, and there still is a lot of activity, there's, they're updating their rule. It was supposed to come out this week, but it, it didn't. So there will even be new requirements that will affect our next permit. But there was a lot of emphasis placed on making these permits more enforceable and measurable and clear and specific. In the past, our stormwater management plans said things like, okay, we will go out and street sweep. Now they want you to be very specific about how many times and where you're going to do that per year, so that if we, if we don't do it, there's an enforcement mechanism. And they also want, for new development and redevelopment, instead of just addressing pollution control, they want us to address the new, the volumes of runoff that are causing degradation. They want us to have a new emphasis on low-impact development, which is more of the green infrastructure, rain gardens like you have in your parking lot here for stormwater runoff, and addressing hydro modification, which is really that increase in flow volumes that's causing streams to get ripped up. The other piece that they wanted to emphasize was we've been asking new development to address water quality, and they realized that a large portion of our urban areas was already built out before we even got this permit, and those areas weren't treated. So a new element of the permit is making us go back and look at existing development and put in retrofits or, you know, water quality treatment facilities to address those areas. So that's kind of the new focus. I think I covered most of these. We also have increases in our monitoring programs. We never had to monitor pesticides before, or mercury, which is our TMDL parameter, biology and geomorphology. And I also wanted to mention that EPA is now auditing these programs, and out of the six Phase 1 permits in Oregon, they've already audited four of them, and Clackamas is likely next on the list. And so those audits have been almost week-long programs where EPA has been coming in and sitting down and reviewing programs, going out in the field to see, are your inspectors really catching these erosion control measures on site and things like that? So it's been pretty intense in terms of having somebody come in and look over your shoulder. So I would anticipate that would happen for Clackamas County, probably early next spring or late winter this year. So now, new requirements in the permit, and I kind of talked about that in terms of the new directions, but DQ had some flexibility in what they were going to put in our new permit. So basically, we're going to continue with the things we've been doing all along, but with those things, they want us to be more precise and make more commitments in terms of how often we do those, and they want us to document everything. So a lot of what we're doing right now to help Oregon City is document standard operating procedures so that if EPA comes in for an audit, you have a document that says what you do, and they can check that. One of the big things they put in our permit was really, is really going to drive us to have to update our design standards. They really want more emphasis, again, on volumes and on prioritizing green infrastructure and low-impact development. So Oregon City's going to have to do a little bit of updating on their design standards to address these new requirements.
I would say that, on that item, we've been kind of waiting because the county's put together a fair work product that would, that we could adopt. They've yet to adopt them themselves because I think there's concern that some of those standards might add, and add requirements for development, for new development, that I don't think their, their current board is completely supportive of. So they haven't, they've yet to adopt those. I haven't gotten an update over that over the last couple of months, but I don't know if you have either.
They've been working with the home builders, because the home builders actually, there have been enough studies to show that the impacts are not as great as they appear to be. And so they've been doing some, an impact analysis on the new standards compared to the old, and I think they've pretty much gotten the home builders on board, so they're working to get the home builders to go to the commission with them and support the standards. So I think they're getting close.
It would be nice to have more of a regional standard as opposed to West Lynn, Gladstone, Milwaukee, Happy Valley, Lake Oswego, Oregon City, all having, you know, slightly different standards. We'd like to have something a little more consistent so that the development community understands what they're in for as well.
Monitoring, because we had our monitoring programs ramped up fairly significantly in terms of, we have to do this pesticide monitoring and mercury monitoring and biological monitoring, so Oregon City's participating in a region-wide monitoring program, which makes this a lot more cost-effective. For example, pesticide monitoring can be very expensive, so we're all participating in a study with USGS, and they're doing the study, and we'll produce the report and everything, and it's just made it so much cheaper to comply with the requirements that way. So we've been addressing the new requirements in a coordinated way with the other jurisdictions. One of the bigger new requirements is, I mentioned hydro modification, which is this more volume of runoff ripping up the streams. We're required to do what's called a hydro modification assessment, which is basically looking at our streams to see, are, are our streams at risk? And where are they at risk? And where are they at most risk? So we can develop priorities and approaches for addressing it. I mean, there could be areas where your streams are stable, the area's already built out, so you don't have to do anything. But they, before they gave us requirements to address it, they wanted us to assess our situation. So I think after we do this assessment in the next permit, they're going to say, well, you said these areas are at risk, now we want you to construct something to address it. As I mentioned, they want us to do a retrofit assessment, and I think this could be really integrated with a stormwater master plan, but this is, again, looking at your areas that are already built out and looking for opportunities where you could go in to retrofit the system to address water quality. A lot of other cities are doing this in conjunction with transportation projects and things that are already underway, because it's an efficient way to get some green infrastructure in there and take credit for it when you're already in constructing another project. But we have to identify high-priority areas and identify retrofit measures and a priority list, and then a timeline and cost estimate for constructing those retrofits. And we have to identify one for construction and initiation within this permit term itself. So this is the first time the permit has ever required a capital project. Almost all the requirements in the permit are really programmatic, you know, street sweeping and maintenance. This is the first time they've required a capital project in the permit. The other thing we have to do is evaluate the feasibility of achieving the standards in the TMDL, the Willamette Water Quality Standards. There's been a lot of talk, and when we look at the data, that shows that we may never get there, no matter what we do. I mean, we've, in some cases, modeled our system as completely open space and shown that we still wouldn't meet the standards. So there might be some glitches with the TMDL when they processed it for some of the parameters. So this is, they want us to show them what it would take to meet the standards using our models. You know, if we put treatment at every outfall, would we meet the standards? And how much would that cost? And this may help us over, over time, sort of get to the point where the standards are reevaluated and made more reasonable. Or it may not, I don't know. And then another new element is we had to actually submit what our process is for doing adaptive management. You know, all along, we always try and improve our programs, but they wanted us to document how we do that, how we evaluate our programs every year and improve them. Because there's a feeling on DQ's part that our pollutant load discharges are not going down over time, and they really want to see some improvement, that we're offsetting new development to make pollutant loads go down over time. And so they constantly want us to ramp up our programs every year. So in terms of upcoming deadlines, we've already submitted some documents. We had to update our illicit discharges program in 2012, and we submitted that. So this year, coming up June 30th, I know your staff is working hard on industrial commercial inspection program, has to be submitted. You had to inventory your municipal facilities that you have and develop stormwater management strategies for your municipal facilities where you store any kind of waste. And implement an inspection program for private water quality facilities. And I won't go through all of these, but I just wanted to sort of convey the point that every year, and this is sort of new with our permit too. We used to just sort of comply with our stormwater management plan and, and report every year on how we were doing. But in this permit, we have sort of new deadlines every year in terms of submitting our hydro modification assessment or our attainment assessment for the loads. So there really is a lot of new work under this permit. And in 2016, we're supposed to submit a permit renewal application, and in 2017, initiate construction of a retrofit project and update the city's stormwater master plan. So there are a lot of fairly hefty to-do items in the, in the permit requirements. We just put this together for all these different things that are required in the permit. I think I've presented this before. The white is not as significant and black being more significant, just to show that for each of these programs, it may not be a large effort, but in combination, there's a lot, a lot to do. And this was an estimate of annual, additional annual resources required. When the permit first came out, this was the estimate of what it would cost in terms of additional staff, sort of the CIP dollars. There are a lot of training requirements in the permit. And the costs on top are sort of the external services for help in developing plans and studies and lab costs and your master plan.
Would you remind us what CIP stands for?
Oh, I'm sorry, Capital Improvement Project. So I think that, in conclusion, that's sort of a overall update.
I've got a question. We're still in Oregon City, expanding into areas that have been basically rural or low-density. A lot of these places have had wells. We had, this was some years ago, in the South End area, we had a person who would come to the public meetings who lived outside the city, his name was Mr. Dinges. He's no longer living, but he had mentioned his, he was on a well, and he said his water level in his well had been going down as development occurred. Is there a possibility that as wells get brought in and essentially decommissioned, that they could actually be used to direct stormwater into the wells and recharge the aquifers?
Yes, there, some cities already do that. I mean, the city of Portland has thousands of those dry wells, they're called, and they're also called in the regulatory arena, UICs, underground injection controls. The one issue with that is, more recently than this program, there's a similar permitting program for that called, it's called a Water Pollution Control Facility Permit, WPCF permit. So there are very similar controls that you have to have in place that allow you to put water into those wells. And it requires pre-treatment typically, and it requires all these same management practices, street sweeping and things upstream, and typically monitoring. Although those rules have recently gotten less, less stringent as they've discovered that a lot of filtration happens of pollutants. They were concerned that those pollut, the pollutants in stormwater would get into the groundwater, which they didn't want that either. But they're finding that it doesn't take much of the soil to get that treated. And so it's, it's possible to do that. Or just having surface infiltration facilities, like what you have in your parking lot, rain gardens, to get the water into the ground on the surface, those are not regulated by any kind of permit. So that's what most cities are trying to push for now, is just to get the water into these surface facilities because they aren't regulated by a permit. But yeah, I, I think because we're paving everything, we're having really high flows in the winter, and our streams are drying up in the summer because there's no groundwater recharge from what used to go into the ground.
Perhaps in a broader look, maybe it's something we can look at.
Well, like I said, those stormwater standards that were, would like to see move forward have a lot of provisions for downspout disconnects and, and rain gardens right at the downspouts. The idea is to recharge the groundwater supply at pretty close to the place where it's falling. So if it's, if we can get, if we could get every homeowner in a subdivision, and especially in some of our concept plan areas, that would help those areas. And, and actually, there's some retrofit programs that were required to meet as well. And I don't know that, you know, downspout disconnect programs, but there's benefits to that too, because some of those in some neighborhoods that we have, we're finding are connected to the sanitary system, and we've got capacity problems on the sanitary side as well. So yeah, those are great ideas, and trying to get them to move forward is kind of where we're headed.
Here, this is some years ago too, and I think it was the county was running in Oregon City these smoke tests through the sewers to see where the smoke was coming up and through the downspouts and so forth. And in my neighborhood, there were a lot of them, but I don't know that anything was ever done about them other than identifying.
Yeah, they were, I know there was a fair amount of history of that kind of work where things were recorded and not probably documented to the standard that we'd like to be able to utilize now, but yeah, we're going to have to do more of that as we find more and more problems with our sanitary system.
Even so, a couple houses where the smoke was coming up through the roof indicating that it was opening up inside an attic or something of that nature. So those are old houses, we don't permit that to occur.
I think that, we got the fire department excited with some of those tests. That's typically what happens, is fire department gets calls about houses burning down.
I have a question. It could be I'm hanging out with the wrong crowd, but a lot of people that I know are doing the downspout disconnect thing and putting in underground, you know, tanks that they're watering with in the summertime. So is that making any difference? Because it would seem like some of that water would go back into evaporation rather than into the aquifer and stuff. So is that to the point where it's making any difference or not?
It can make a difference, and there, I mean, that's one of the practices that's being encouraged. It's called rainwater harvesting, yeah, and people are using rain barrels and things like that. Can make a little difference. The problem is those barrels fill up really fast. Only takes a few storm events to fill those up, and then they're not effective for the rest of the winter unless you're emptying them out on a regular basis at a, at a slow rate, you know, kind of letting them.
But that's not something that's measurable by your standards yet?
Well, they're encouraging it, yeah. But it just has some issues with it in terms of, what they're encouraging is that it gets metered out over time. So if your rain barrel fills up over a couple days, and you have a couple days of dry weather, that they want you to slowly release that in your backyard or something, which is a lot for a homeowner to be, you know, responsible for doing on a regular basis. So they're encouraging it, but I think when you're designing your system, it's hard to count on those things happening because you're relying on homeowners to be doing, doing it.
But the business community is coming around. I mean, we see a lot of that in, in other jurisdictions where they're, you know, they're building, you know, significant water reuse systems, even plumbing buildings with them. And so the plumbing, the building codes are coming around on some of those reuse systems as well. More for the commercial end of things, but, you know, it takes time to get those, those kinds of standards adopted.
Water Services has a roof rainwater harvesting, and then they flush their toilets with that water. So, I mean, there are creative things going on out there.
Yeah, I was just talking to someone that's just put in a 1,500 gallon tank, and they're using gray water and the roof water harvesting.
Those things definitely help. I think the focus now is, it used to be on building these big, huge detention ponds, you know, regional-type facilities, and these regulations are trying to move us back to doing little things on-site all over the place to have incremental benefits, like these things in your parking lot, for example.
I guess I want to acknowledge, Gail Johnson showed up for this presentation. She's our water quality coordinator, so she does a lot of our drinking water, water quality things, but also our stormwater quality. She meets a lot of the regulatory, she keeps that, that ball rolling down the road in the right direction. So thanks for coming, Gail.
Mayor, I have a question. So Krista, I'm curious, in your conversations with EPA, if some of these, some of these requirements in the new permits are pretty ambitious as far as the financial impacts to cities? And I'm just curious about, if there's been any conversations about funding mechanisms or the unfunded mandates that some, because Oregon City may be able to cope with this, but I'm pretty sure some of our other cities in the county aren't going to be able to.
There are cities that are really struggling.
We're going to soon be there too, if they, these continue to ramp up, and has there been?
I mean, there's a lot of complaints too EPA about, they hear that unfunded mandate call pretty regularly. But they haven't been addressing it. There is, you know, the requirement in the permit is to reduce pollutants to the maximum extent practicable. So I suppose if we got to a point where we really couldn't do these things, and it went to court, there would be a review of what our maximum extent practicable was and how feasible it was from a financial standpoint. But they don't provide.
Their expectation is that we continue to raise the stormwater revenue stream from, from our side of the fence and keep increasing STCs and other improvements.
I mean, their theory is that until we see water quality standards being met in the receiving waters, that we have to keep working to make improvements. And it was kind of the same, I think it was the same kind of program for wastewater treatment plants, you know, until their discharges. And we spend a lot of money on our wastewater treatment plants too, so I think they view those things very similarly, is that.
Yeah, back then, there were a lot more, there were a lot of grant programs though to help meet those standards, and I haven't heard any conversations about those for this.
In fact, 319 grants and things like that, you can't get those if you're using them to meet a requirement. So there aren't a lot, there's some watershed grants out there that are being used for stream restoration projects and things, but EPA is not really helping with the funding.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now we go back to John Lewis for the biggie.
The biggie. The biggie.
There you go.
I'm reluctant, but bought my first pair of readers the other day.
Sometimes I need them and sometimes I don't, but.
All right, so yeah, we're here to talk about the biggie, the Transportation System Plan and some of our code amendments. We were, we met, uh, we presented last on this on May 15th, and so we are, just make sure. Line here, line here with what. So, um, just for the viewing audience, we're talking about, uh, the, basically the transportation bible that the city adopts, uh, from time to time. It's our Transportation System Plan update. It's a 20-year look ahead at our transportation system needs, and really, um, we've, we've had lots of meetings on this, and you've had much better presenters than I to talk about the details of what this Transportation System Plan is really about, but it's really about all modes of travel. Lot more focused on, um, the, the suite of options for, for people to get around than it has been in the past before it was focused pretty heavily on driving solutions, and now we're looking more at biking and walking and transit and those kinds of, of solutions. So, not gonna go too deep into this, um, much, you know, we've, we've kind of covered this ground. Um, but on May 15th, we, the city commission hearing, staff provided preliminary information regarding the trade-off between congestion and investing in the improvements to our transportation system. The city commission directed us at that time to investigate the issue further and provide additional information. And so, you know, today we're here to do that. I'm gonna give you a quick heads up that, um, we're gonna go over some details that you may be familiar with, but we're really gonna provide you with a recommendation. So there's three alternatives that we're gonna look at, and there's a memo that went out and was included in your packet. I'm kind of hoping that you've reviewed that. I'm gonna go over that memo in, uh, in a fair amount of detail. Um, but really, our recommendation is to, is to not adopt fee increases, and so that may be a sigh of relief on one side, but it does have some, um, issues associated with it, but we think we're, based on our analysis, we're gonna be able to provide you enough information where you'll be agree, you'll agree with that, uh, direction. So, let's see. Uh, the proposed Transportation System Plan is designed to comply with mobility standards, established in the Regional Transportation Function Plan and used by ODOT in the state highway system. Really a measure of, of congestion. Um, it's typically measured at intersections, um, and in, in our case for the Transportation System Plan, we looked at 20 key intersections to, um, establish kind of, you know, where our system is overall with regard to congestion. I know this map is probably hard to read. We've actually got hard copies of it. Um, Laura will hand those out. Um, these are the 20 intersections that the Transportation System Plan looked at. Um, if you could imagine the, the study work that goes into this, we, our, our funding wouldn't allow us to do much more than this, but these, so this was, these were problematic intersections, intersections that were identified in our, in our last Transportation System Plan, and so, um, this is, this is the results of that. And there's really different colored, um, indications for intersections that worked fairly well, were good, um, they're in the green, intersections that were marginal, they're in the yellow, and then intersections that, uh, had some problems and were what we call substandard. And so there's a fair amount of red dots in there, and most of them are focused on, um, the, uh, a lot on the ODOT facilities, but we do have some at South End and Warner Parrot, and, um, also off of, off of Beaver Creek Road near, near Maple Lane. Um, for the most part, um, most of the key intersections had affordable and implemental, implementable, uh, improvements, which we identified in our Transportation System Plan as, as, um, as projects that, that we would have a fix for. But as you heard last, uh, in May, um, not all the projects were feasible. So, um, for those projects that, that had fixes, you know, we've, we've identified those and we've included those in our Transportation System Plan. There's three intersections, I-205, uh, at Oregon Highway 213 interchange, there's, uh, there's congestion problems at that location, 99E and I-205 interchange, and Beaver Creek Road and Highway 213. All of those, uh, the projects have, have turned out to be, uh, have a fair amount of existing condition and would have more congestion at build-out. The fixes for those are, uh, very expensive, and, uh, we've got some, to the point where we haven't, and ODOT hasn't done a lot of analysis as to what those would cost, but we've got some cost ranges that we used. So, a total project cost for the three of those was, uh, 136 million, uh, and on the low end and 256 million on the high end. So, um, not easy projects to manage, and, um, so that's, and that's what we brought before you last, at our last meeting, and what we want to talk more about, what this memorandum is really about is, so. So, um, neither ODOT or Clackamas County or Oregon City have the projected funding to be able to take on these, these three intersections. Due to large costs associated with the improvements, the projects do not appear, uh, on the Oregon Highway Plan or the Regional Transportation System Plan or the proposed TSP, um, just mainly because there's, there's very little likelihood that they'll be funded. And, uh, we've heard pretty clearly from ODOT that, um, there's higher needs across the region, and they don't necessarily want us to include these projects in our TSP with, uh, you know, either been partial funding or match funding, because they don't see any of the, any of the projected funding that might come in the way of a federal grant to be pointed at and, and get much support from the region, because that's really what it takes on these larger transportation projects is to get regional support. So instead, they've suggested that we adopt these alternate mobility standards that allow for a greater level of congestion, but they also solve a lot of, uh, they may be able to solve a lot of the problems that, um, we have with the alternate modes, so transportation, um, walking and biking solutions. So, and they also feel like this is, since this is a regional problem, and a regional problem that has yet to kind of been figured out, that they would like us to do more investigation, um, and what they're calling alter, alternate mobility standards analysis, and so that's, that's kind of what comes out of this recommendation is we need to, we need to think a fair, uh, quite a bit more about what we could do with these intersections, or maybe these entire corridors when they involve an entire corridor. So by waiving these, we've got a period of time here where, um, developers would not necessarily have to pay to fix these very expensive projects. They wouldn't be stopped by a project that's not gonna be funded, or that's, well beyond their means to fund. And we, we did look at other funding sources, and it seems like while the well isn't dry, it's, it's pretty close with regard to these three intersections. So, um, we, we, we don't think, uh, either our own ability to raise fundings through urban renewal or increased STCs is, uh, we could probably raise enough to be a match. We'd have to raise our STCs to do that, or we'd have to utilize funds raised through urban renewal, but we're really only gonna be able to raise enough, even if we approve those increases, to, to create a match for a project that, um, we don't believe, uh, the state or the region is gonna support. So we put our heads together on this since our last meeting to think about, um, kind of what we had proposed. I think at the last meeting I proposed maybe we'd look at increased STCs, and the feedback we got was, well, we're a little uneasy about that kind of a suggestion, and we'd like you to look closer at what your transportation fees look like compared to other, uh, agencies. So, we looked at, uh, we looked at the, um, increased requirements that this would take. We also, um, took a harder look at, at trying to get an estimate for what the three projects would cost. So we figured that the three projects would cost, we, we got those numbers from both , uh, DKS and from ODOT, and, uh, that's where that 136,000, or 136 million dollar project cost came from. And then we also looked at how our, how much growth is projected in our city, and, uh, divided the, the, uh, project cost by the amount of growth, and that's where we come up with our SDC increase. So what you're showing, what you're seeing there is, in terms of comparables, is several cities in our area, Oregon City's listed twice, but one shown with an SDC increase. So, in order to fund these, provide some level of funding, and at the, at the time we said 10%, this analysis shows 10%, so to fund 10% of that 136 million dollars worth of projects, Oregon City would need to see an SDC increase that would go from $7,616 per single-family home to $8,568 per single-family home. And our, you know, this was a little surprise to me, we hadn't looked at this, but we are already kind of on the high end of the scale for STCs for transportation. Let me just emphasize that. Uh, we, we've yet to kind of review all our transfer, all our STCs, but for transportation, we're kind of on the high end of that. I, I, um, well, I guess I'm not sure where we sit with regard to all the other STCs and how we compare with other agencies, but we'll keep looking at, at that figure. Option B, uh, would be, is a, is a different take on this. It, um, it focuses a fee on, um, more major development, so I would say more commercial development. So, um, because residential development typically isn't required to do a traffic study, um, but the, but the larger developments would be required to do a traffic study. So if a traffic study was required, if it, um, indicated that there was increased trips at these intersections, then we came up with a, a cost per car. So, for instance, if a big box store opens up and impacts, um, Beaver Creek Road with 50 peak hour trips, and impacts, um, Highway 213 and I-205 with another 30 trips, we would, um, apply those numbers against these, um, per car trips and come up with a fee for those that we would collect and then keep in our, keep in a fund that would set aside and be available for those three intersections. That clear as mud, that one there?
No, it's better.
Okay. Um, here's the, here's the really tough one to figure out, the no-fee increase. This is kind of the do-nothing option which we're recommending. Uh, we're recommending this because, um, well, we've talked about the li, the likelihood, more like the unlikelihood that we'll see funding from somewhere else. Our current STCs are already relatively high. Um, Carrie and others in, in our, um, legal counsel have suggested we run a pretty high risk if we collect those fees now, and, uh, it's confirmed in a few years that we definitely don't have, uh, a project out there, then we would be required to find a way to reimburse all those STCs. So go back historically and try and, you know, figure out who might, um, who, you know, who's paid those STCs and who would get them back. Um, we'll have minor improvements at the exempt locations. That's true. We're, the transportation, just, these, even these three intersections may have minor improvements that are listed in our Transportation System Plan, so, um, there's still, those projects are still on the list and would still be required. Um, we, we've shown that, uh, complex SDC methodology is not always the, the right way to go, so let's keep it simple if we can. Um, reduces our cost for administration, and, uh, this doesn't preclude the city commission from implementing SDC changes following the completion of the mobility standard studies, which are really kind of the next step. So we think we can get those done in the next 12 to 24 months. And option C would not delay the adoption of the Transportation System Plan and the code changes. So status quo, acknowledgement that these projects are, are bigger than our, our means, and, um, we move forward with the plan to adopt the, the Transportation System Plan and aggressively go after those mobility standard studies and see where we end up after that. So the three options. Um, the next step is we're gonna have a city commission hearing on June 19th, and then another hearing on the 18th where we hope to have an adopted Transportation System Plan and code amendments. So I'll take any questions you might have.
I had some questions.
Go ahead.
Um, you answered one of them already. On option A, it talks about fees being returned. I'm assuming that's to the developer or whoever paid the fee.
That's right.
Not just citywide, oh, we gotta check, like, okay. Um, and then in option B, where did it go? I just really didn't understand option B very well.
Option B is a little harder to understand. It's just, um, it basically takes that same project cost of 136 million and divides it differently. Uh, when we divided it onto the, um, STCs, that was a citywide SDC, so any, any, um, residential development or commercial development, you know, based on the, uh, SDC calculation, they pay a unit rate. If it's a house, they pay, you know, that SDC one time. If it's a, if it's a commercial use that, that has a, a higher, uh, unit price and there's a multiplier in there. But basically, we're taking the number of peak hour trips, which in Oregon City, it's another 21,000 peak hour trips, and we're dividing, uh, we're dividing the project cost of 136 million by that 21,000 and coming up with a increase per car. Okay, that's A. This one here takes that 136 million and looks at the peak hour trip specific to more of that, that kind of development that's gonna require traffic impact analysis and divides it that way. It's a, it's a tougher calculation to come by. Carrie, maybe you could help me. I know you and Laura put a lot more thought into this one here. It's, it's, it's more complicated and probably is a little bit, uh, more likely to be challenged.
The idea is you're capturing those uses that have the most impact on it, on the congestion for intersection. Because the theory is that one use coming into the system adding 50 trips at one time, it needs to be captured, whereas that incremental one trip that's gonna happen over the next 18 months may not be capturable, or may not be appropriate to capture. So we'll, it, it will be the uses we know will have a significant impact, and we're gonna capture that. The, the problem with that is that it has a disproportionate impact on those big trip generators. And it makes the whole SDC collection system more complicated, and, um, and again, this may be for 18 months, and we would have an obligation to reimburse in the event that we don't use the money. I mean, I think that that was the big sticking point for our office, was we learned for the first time, I think over the last few weeks, that ODOT has no intention of incur, of funding these improvements, and in fact, would dissuade us from doing it if we had the money. And that made us sort of think, well, wait a minute, why should we do it?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you know, you were, I may have forgotten wrong, but you were focusing maybe increases in STCs on commercial. Did I understand that right, on retail?
Uh, under option B, it's more heavily weighted on those large generators, which would typically be a commercial use, industrial use. It would be a non-residential use. So, so those non-residential kinds of uses, depending on the size of those, are typically would, would be where this would be focused, on those bigger traffic generators.
If we went back and looked at the various cities, my recollection was actually, we've got the, um, if you look down there, um, our special, well, maybe you're not talking about that, maybe you're talking about General Office Building. The specialty retail, the kinds of things we're, you know, trying to encourage in some of our areas like the Main Street and so forth, um, some of the biggest differences between us and cities below us is in that category. You just dropped down a couple, and, and you see that we're charging a lot more on specialty retail than once you get down to Tigard and so forth, they're, they're less than half of what we're charging. And yet, this is an area that we're really trying to attract, is, that, that bothers me a little bit.
One thing I'll say, these are general categories on the top for, um, I wouldn't expect you to remember this, but in, um, oh, there's, there's, um... you to remember this, but in, oh, there's, there's Malala Avenue Corridor, the Seventh Avenue Corridor, and the, Tony, help me out, is the mixed-use, or not, Mixed Use Corridor. So Mixed Use Corridor Downtown, yeah. So that's a lot of, well, everything in Main Street. We have, have code provisions that any kind of development in there, in that, in those, in those areas, get charged what we call a shopping center rate, which is a much more favorable rate than what the specialty retail is. So in those corridors, we, we're not showing that necessarily here, that level of detail, but I would say the city commissions, I don't remember when that date came along, but the past city commission, a past city commission, made that decision, I think, in an effort to kind of help encourage development. So, some of that's been resolved for those Seventh, Malala, and kind of the downtown area.
I think a part of that, too, is like in our mixed-use downtown zone, you know, pretty much anything downtown below the bluff, you know, essentially, you have such a mix of uses potentially coming in and out of buildings and trying to track, went from retail to office.
Right.
To, to retail, back to a different use, that we would just put it under that general retail and not get so, you know, spend so much time and energy trying to track down the history of, well, what was the use in here fifteen years ago, what was it ten years ago? And so we went to that one general.
So, so we're, we're trying to develop those mixed-use corridors, and we're trying to make it simpler.
Correct.
Okay.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
Question. This attachment, it's the number D, it's the, where the, all the projects are rated.
You mean, is it one of the slides?
It's one of the documents. Let's see, it's Proposed TSP Likely and Not Likely Funded Project List.
Oh, okay.
There were a couple on there that I had questions about.
Well, thank you, Laura. Do you have that one?
Which, which one?
I figured, you guys have.
Page, let's see.
So which project is it, do you know?
Uh, no, there's two of them. D forty, which is on page three.
Yes, Main Street to Dunes Drive.
Okay, is this that roundabout we've been talking about? Because this is saying likely to be funded.
Main Street and Dunes Drive.
We rubbed the roundabout.
Right.
Yeah. Well, they listed as a single-lane roundabout, there's still the intersection itself, so we've changed the plan for what kind of intersection it would be, but we still have the intersection improvements that need to be done.
Okay, but it's no longer a roundabout.
No longer a roundabout.
Okay, that's what, what that question was. And then on page fifteen, D seventy-three. Now, my confusion in this one is, it says it's not likely to be funded, McLaughlin Boulevard Improvements Phase Two. I know, isn't that what we're talking about going ahead with? We've been just looking at all of this stuff? And it says not likely to be funded.
Very good.
That is the project that we're moving forward with right now. Remember, we didn't use, we're not using transportation SDCs on that project, we're using a grant, and we're using urban renewal funds for that.
Okay, so.
So, I think that, that could be clearer, no doubt, and I think it should be on the, we probably could almost eliminate it from the list, just because we're.
It's somewhere else.
It's already funded, yeah.
Okay. All right, those were my two I was confused about. Thanks.
Yeah, those are good questions and good points, I think. Anything else?
Our transportation system plan includes pathways and so forth, am I right? It's my recollection, last transportation system plan that we have, some of our pedestrian ways that we were talking about have had subdivisions going through them, they were never developed. What's the guarantees that those will go forward as development comes in? I almost like to take a ma, look at the map of previous ones, but I'm pretty sure there are cases where, where we had pedestrian pathways and a new development came in and new pathways came in. I mean, what, what checks do we have to, to make sure that doesn't happen?
Well, from, from my understanding, as the development comes through, the transportation system plan is the guidance document, and at that point in time, staff would review the transportation system plan, see if there's, if, if the intent of the system, transportation system plan is, needs to be implemented, and if so, it'd be a requirement of that development. If there's another alternative that makes maybe more sense, that might not be aligned with what's in the plan, but is in a different location, then we would, we might allow that not to happen. So, but typically, the, the projects that are in the transportation system plan, if they're shown in a, a property that's either, either redeveloping or new development, should comply with the transportation system plan.
When you're coming up with exceptions, that is, you're saying, well, maybe that does need to come forward, is that strictly an internal review? Or is it something that has a, kind of a, well, our tech looks at those to, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that some of these, some of these that go forward, if they're looked at only by the planning department itself and not by another entity, it, it concerns me that there isn't some citizen input when that happens.
Well, I, I mean, it's no different than any of our other master plans. If there's, for instance, a pump station that shows up on a sewer master plan, or a water line that shows up on a water master plan, it, I, I guess I'm going to defer to Tony on the land use side of that, but in theory, the way this, way it's supposed to work is that planning and engineering review that proposal, compare it against our, our plans, and make a determination as to whether or not that's, that's something that should go forward, and if it is, it's, it goes on our.
I'll just go for one example that's recollection, and I may be wrong in my recollection. My belief was that there was a pedestrian pathway that was supposed to go south of Toose Pond in that area that God developed, and I'm not sure whenever, when, yeah.
So, and I guess I'll start with, you know, we, we go back and look at Trails Master Plan, and we work with the other departments to identify, when a land use application comes in, where do we start? And on the Toos Pond, what we did is we, because that was kind of one of the first parts of the segment that came in, and nothing had been constructed, we secured the public access easement for that path to be constructed, once the remainder, once there's something to connect to.
So we've got the easement?
Yeah, so we do review these, these plans. In some situations, the ped, the ped, path plan may call for an on-street path. So it may be on there, identified as a trail, but if, you know, in the detail, it may be, you know, that it's a, it's a sidewalk, and that, so it's not necessarily an off-street path. So there are multiple kinds of paths that we do exact when we do staff reports, and so we do go back to these adopted plans. And then, it complicates a little bit, too, like on the TSP, you know, we'll show that between point A and B, we need a connection, and there'll be a dotted line, and the assumption is, well, it's going to be right where that dotted line is.
Right.
But some, you know, we may get it for the property, so in that, with trails, that could happen as well. I mean, it's, it's, we're trying to connect two points, and what's the best way to do that? And if we can do it with a, if it makes sense, or we do, but we do refer to them through the pre-app and then our review.
So at some point, that build-out, perhaps in that area, then we've, we've got it mapped out, and then we can do something about it.
Correct.
I agree, it doesn't make any sense to have two blocks of trails that doesn't connect into anything else, but.
So we secured the, the location, the easement, the, the public access easement is recorded against the plat, and so it's there for us to then go build at a later date.
Okay.
I do agree, though, that there, we're going to need some tools to make sure, I mean, Clermont is a good example, we, we just bid that project, and, you know, in our transportation system plan, it calls for bike lanes on, in either direction on Clermont. So, right now, there's just travel lanes, and there's a, a white stripe, but, and there's allowed on-street parking on one side during partial hours and not on the other. And so our plan just said, or our, our construction project just said, we're going to put it back the way it was. Well, we started looking closer at the TSP, and we're planning to, we did a, we did a contract amendment to basically leave on-street parking on one side, so that we could still get in both, both bike lanes and both travel lanes, and meet the intent of the transportation system plan. But I, I can already tell with, you know, with all these plans, it's, it's a challenge to kind of just keep in tune with all the projects that come along. And there's going to be certain projects where, you know, let's say there was a small development on Clermont that was redoing some frontage improvements, you know, to do what we would need to do along Clermont, in terms of moving, you know, you wouldn't do that for, you know, a couple hundred feet across the front of a property, so it might be that we take the position that, we know we need to do that, we're not going to really take that project on until we're doing something more comprehensive.
And, and I would agree. So what you'll see, you know, you'll, sometimes you'll see a new subdivision come in on, let's say, Central Point, or one of those that has, you know, kind of a, it's been incrementally developed. And so what we try to do is make sure that we get sufficient right-of-way. And so sometimes you'll, why is the, why is the right-of-way, why is the paved width of this street so wide? And what it would be is, we've got the two bike lanes in there, but we didn't stripe them, because it's only two-hundred-and-fifty feet long, and there's nothing on either. And so we're, we're planning for it. Once that, once that full segment is done, we'll have the right-of-way and the ability to stripe it safely. But sometimes we don't require the striping, because it just doesn't make sense in the context of what's around it at this point in time.
Another thing that concerns me, and I, I don't know how you build it into the plans, it really becomes a city issue. When the chapel went in there on, on John Adams Street, you now have complete sidewalk access across all properties, right, all the way from Fifteenth up to Twelfth and beyond Twelfth, except for a city-owned park. And, you know, that, that disturbs me. I mean, when we're the, when the city ends up being the, the area that doesn't provide the service, where probably all the development's going to occur there has occurred to provide the sidewalks and so forth, and we're the, we're the only segment that doesn't have them. And I don't know how you develop, put that into your plans, but I think it's got to be something that becomes considered.
I'm thinking transportation SDCs.
That's.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think.
Well, or, but, but, but in a broader sense, when they're publicly owned properties, it might, it might be prob, for something like that. And then we know there are parks without sidewalks, maybe it's parks SDCs we ought to take a look at. Because, I mean, it's the property owners that are responsible for the sidewalks anyway. So it makes sense, the, the use of the property by the city is probably the entity that should be responsible for.
And even the transportation SDCs that we also pay into, when we develop the property.
Yeah.
So we're, we're participants.
Right.
That's a good point.
We just, we just want to make sure that we can justify, you know, we're collecting SDCs to, for increased demand, not making improvements to existing, so we just need to make sure that we're, it's well thought of, how we spend those SDCs, and John and the attorneys certainly help us with that.
Not just because it's a park across the street from the mayor's house?
I didn't say that.
That's the one I see all the time. I'm sure we can all come up with examples. However, the, across the street from the mayor's house has a sidewalk. It has to add capacity.
Then you're not listening to that one, that's longer.
So. Then I won't care anymore.
I know this is a work session, but we're, we're moving forward unless we hear strong objections with the recommendation that we're making, which is really not keep SDCs where they're at, essentially get through the mobility standard studies, and then see what happens then.
My, my suggestion is if, if any one of us on the commission has a concern or an issue, bring it, bring it up ahead of time, so, so the staff can in fact be able to respond to it, because we're actually, we're going to start, start dealing with this at the commission level.
And, and while I think we've come up with a interim way to address the, the issue for permitted and conditional uses, it will still have an impact on zone change, comprehensive plan amendments, because of the transportation planning rule requirement that says you have to look out twenty years, and we know we have issues at twenty years, so, and it would also impact master plans. Whereas the master plan code was set up so that someone could come in and have, you know, five phases over fifteen years, but that means we have to look at year fifteen. And what we're probably going to be doing is if someone comes in for a master plan, we would approve all parts of the master plan except for the transportation component. And when they came in for their detailed plan for what they're actually going to build, then they would address the transportation impacts, and whichever code is on the book is codified when they come in, would be the standards that they need to apply to, because we just, there may be situat, there may be others, it's in a certain part of the city where, where it's not an impact, or the master plan is short enough that the intersection won't fail at their build-out, but there is that potential. So we believe we've addressed permitted and conditional uses, there are other parts that this one, this one.
As a citizen answered the question, I have no problem, but we got to identify yourself and come up to the mic, but you're used to that anyway. William Gifford.
Mayor and city commissioners, I realize this is a work session, usually citizen comment, but I don't know when there's a better opportunity to talk about an issue about sidewalks that you mentioned about development, and sometimes we have this sort of grandfathered development where we, and I'm thinking specifically of areas like Pease Road, where it's, it's, it's a mess. And, and I know that there isn't really a, I don't think that there's a, a way that we can codify this and say, you know, all new development has to, yeah, we can say that all new development has to have sidewalks, but the existing stuff, there isn't. But it seems to me as though, and I've mentioned this before, and I, Tony made a presentation at Tower Vista one time, that there could be a political solution rather than a legal solution. The political solution would be have someone, the mayor, the city manager, or economic development, or somebody, talk to the developers and say, listen, you're putting in this nice subdivision, and you're putting in nice sidewalks because you have to, but your properties would be worth more money if you would help the neighbors on either side of you, for a certain area, put sidewalks in to them. And it would never be cheaper, because the equipment would be out there already. Now, what's in it to the other neighbors? Because that's an expense that they don't want to go through, except that their property values would go up as well. So they would be able to have increased value for their properties, and it would cost less than there would at any other time, because the development is going to help. So maybe there could be a negotiation with the developer and say, hey, listen, why don't you share the costs with your neighbors? It increases your property value, increases their property value, and the city wins, because we've got a better, a, a, a more connected network of sidewalks, so it's good for the whole community, but there isn't a way that you can legally do that. I suspect that that's, that can only be done as a, as a political solution, and someone would have to talk with the developers and neighbors.
There's some kind of mechanism, too, because, I mean, some of those, some of those neighbors who have large lots, they were rural, they may subdivide themselves, and perhaps when the subdivisions come in, then the developer can pay back the, the, because we did that on South End Road, where a developer that was putting it in actually put it on way beyond the development, with the understanding they get paid back as time went on. That worked pretty successfully, I think.
It was for the sanitary sewer.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I'm just saying that I don't think that all solutions are going to be able to be codifiable solutions.
Yeah.
Some of them are going to have to be, but somebody's going to have to take the initiative of actually talking to developers and making those suggestions.
You know, city managers asked the Public Works Department to work with some citizen interest groups to, to look harder at sidewalks, and, you know, a lot of that's got to do with these lifted pieces of sidewalks. But to me, the other part of that conversation would be this, filling in some of the gaps.
Yeah.
It would be great if we could put together a solution like William suggested, with a little bit of city funding, with, you know, some property owner funding, and have a solution there that would fill those sidewalk gaps. And I think we, you committed me to Mon, to January, right? To get to that topic.
And what Mr. Gifford essentially, what Mr. Gifford essentially described, it exists as far as a statutory tool in the form of local improvement district. And we used LIDs pretty extensively in some of the other cities I've managed, and I think, John, the idea of having a small amount of seed money and having the economies of scale with the developers seeing, and the neighborhood seeing the benefits, I think in Oregon, I can't remember if it's eighty percent or what, what it is, but there's a percentage of property owners that you have to have. So sometimes they're not doable, because you have one or two or three percent above, yes, they hold out and don't want to participate, but it is a pretty effective tool, and I think we could probably make more use of it.
I also see along some of those roads, I'm sorry.
Let's go ahead. Let's go ahead.
There's some little plots that are outside the city limits. So, you're going to run into some of those that can't be contiguous unless the people really are.
Pease Road's the worst, almost the worst example you could have used there. Thanks for that, but yeah, there's a lot of that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Looking forward to coming back very shortly.
Yeah, I think you're heading in the right direction.
Mayor, I want to, I want to say something here. I appreciate the staff's creativity on finding this. I, I think getting us a temporary answer that we wanted. So, the good news is no SDC increases for the next couple of years. You know, the bad news is, is I was talking to an ODOT staff member here before we started the meeting, that it's going to have to probably get a lot worse for Oregonians across the state before it gets better. And these are big, big statewide impacts that are going to have to, I think, change the way the public feels about their tolerance for some of this congestion before they're really willing to do something about it. And so, while we have a recommendation not to increase SDCs right now as part of the TSP, I think probably two years from now, we're going to have to revisit that discussion. And even for the TSP that we are recommending, you still have to have adjustments from time to time. But I think we're probably good for about two years after this.
Good, I won't have to deal with the crap then.
I think it may be cheaper if we just paid for everybody to go to something like New York City and then they'd come back here and they'd think, we don't have problems.
Isn't that, isn't that, I mean, you can, in Beaverton where I used to live, that's how I feel. When I'm on this side of the river, it's like, well, this was bad. But then I think about Two Seventeen and it feels so much better.
So, Beaverton would be cheaper than New York, yeah.
Yeah. It has to get worse before it gets better.
Well, with that, I guess we can go to a City Managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to make a personal comment?
Not, not yet, but working up to that. So, there, there has been some talk, I know there's concern about, from some in the community about the Cove and the, some of the intersections and street improvements that could be required on Ninety-Nine. And I just want to let the commission know that we are, that there have been, I think, two or three traffic studies going back five or six years on that area. And there's been enough lapse of time and changes in the project that the, the code is going to require the Cove developer to complete a new traffic study or, or update an existing one. So, so that when you hear, and I've heard a few folks out in the community articulating their concerns about traffic capacity generated by that project and potential congestion. But I want to encourage the commission to, to just withhold judgment until we actually see the study completed because I know we're all traffic experts, but there are people that know more than we do about this and we should probably get the studies and get the facts first and then make, make our decisions based on that. So, that would be required either way. And I think that's an important thing. I might ask Mr. Lewis in the next couple of days to send you some history on that. He sent me an email today that revised, that provides some of that detail. So, John, if you could share with the commission what you did with me this afternoon, I think that'd be good food for thought as we think about the future. Also, the CET funding from Metro that we're relying heavily on for our Willamette Falls Legacy Project planning, we've requested four hundred thousand and we need every bit of that to, to really have those forty meetings and the very ambitious planning effort that you saw at our last, you know, you saw a summary of it at, at the last meeting. The timing here is a little bit awkward, so what we're probably going to be doing is asking the commission for a conditional approval. And one of the conditions being that we get that money. And then, if we do get the money, then we don't have to come back to the commission and the time, the thing can unravel on the schedule that we have. Because we do have a short timeline and a really ambitious schedule. And I have a call in to Metro right now to, to see how firm they think those dollars are. We've been told that they're pretty firm, but, you know, there, there are votes required and there's a committee that studies it. And, and you know, you do your metro enhancement every year, so you know that there's never such a thing as a sure thing until it's done. So, we'll probably be coming back to you asking for a conditional approval. Tony, did you have anything to add to that?
No, I think, you know, just reading what David said, our intention was to bring it next Wednesday, or the, the eighteenth, to the commission meeting. And because of the timeline that we do have and we have money, part of the money right now is that we would set a, a limit on how much we could spend, which we believe would be the gap that would get us through the, the approvals from the CET part of that, of that process and get through their selection committee, their CEO, and then up to their, their counselors.
I'm going to ask a question. How many of the Metro counselors have visited the site? Of course, we know Carlotta has, but.
I believe all of them have at this point.
Have they?
Pretty sure.
Okay, I think that's critical.
Some of them multiple times, but I think all of them have been there at least once. Next, Eric Underwood, I think, is he, is Eric here? Eric is doing another one of the entrepreneur series in collaboration with the library. And Eric, do you want to say something about it?
No, but Mo does.
Mo's always willing to talk about the library.
Yeah, it's a team effort, so we came up here as a team. So, yeah, May thirtieth, we kicked off our Business Entrepreneurial Series with Rob Campbell, who is the Director of the Small Business Development Center here with the Community College. And it was about lessons learned from small business. It was very well received. For our first event, we had twelve people there, which was great. And the presentation went very well. And we took a survey, a quick survey on the way out the door for people. And they all thought it was really great and informative and I think they were happy to be there. So, it was, we consider it a great success for the first one. And we're already in the planning stages for the second one, which should happen in September, so. Anything you want to add, Mo?
Give a thumbs up.
That's what she has. Silent partner.
That's it, okay.
Great, thank you.
That's all I have this evening?
And that's probably all we have, unless somebody has something.